It's four o'clock and I'd like to call this Board of Commissioners meeting to order Thursday, excuse me, Tuesday, July the 14th at approximately 4:07. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Krieger.
Here.
Big Eck. Commissioner Big Eck. Commissioner Harret.
Here.
Commissioner Ryder.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Big Eck, we're here.
Thank you ma'am. Please rise for the invocation and.
The name called me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. They're hearing us.
Madam Clerk, did you get Commissioner Coonan and Commissioner, who else didn't get acknowledged for being here? Krieger.
I'm here.
I had trouble hearing Vaughn Big Eck.
He's here at the community center.
Do you want me to do it again?
Yeah, please, and let's not forget our invocation.
Okay, in the meeting with the roll call, Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Here.
Coonan?
Here.
Harret?
Here.
Ryder?
Here.
Lutz?
Here.
Chair Durancheck?
Here.
All members present, shall we go to the invocation now?
Inlocation, yes, please.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon thanking you for the guidance and understanding that you have given this Board of Commissioners. Lord, we ask again today for your help and direction so this board may make the fair and proper decisions for all citizens of Bay County. In your holy name we ask this, amen.
Thank you ma'am. Minute five twelve twenty and six nine of twenty.
I move the minute.
Support.
We have motion and support to approve the minutes received, five twelve and six nine of twenty twenty. Roll call vote, please.
You start the roll call votes with Commissioner Lutz, please.
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yeah.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you ma'am. This time, citizen input. Anyone from the audience or citizen would like to chime in on any issues, now is your time. Hearing none, we'll move forward to petitions and communications. If we have any, we're good there. Reports and resolutions of committees, ways and means, Chairman, Commissioner Harry.
Okay, here we go. Resolution number 2020-118, the library and millage question, I move that resolution.
For. We have motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yeah.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution carries.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-119, animal services millage ballot question, I move that resolution.
For. We have motion and support. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Excuse me, discussion. Commissioner Ryder?
Thank you. You know, I really don't have a problem with the millage proposal. What I have a problem with is there's two other millages on the ballot. I question the timing of it. I don't know, I've been around for a little while and whenever I see a millage and it doesn't pass, seems like the public remembers that forever and the next time that millage comes up, it doesn't fly again. It is a meager amount, I give you that, but timing, I think, is everything and I would, I would encourage us at this time not to do that. I mean, personally, I have one rescue dog and two rescue cats besides two other dogs. And so, it's not that I'm not in favor of a millage, but I just question the timing of this and I think we would be better served to wait. Thank you.
Commissioner Coonan?
I agree with Commissioner Ryder. I don't think this is the time. I think management or administration should come up with a plan that has some well-thought, a well-thought plan and an opportunity to educate the public on that plan. I don't think there's enough time to educate the public on this. So, as Commissioner Ryder said, if it fails, it's probably going to be difficult to have it to date. There are some other, you know, we got the library and we got the care facility. You get too many on there and I don't think it's a good thing. So, I'm not going to vote for this at this time.
Commissioner Krieger? Did you have something?
No, other than the fact that I agree with the other two commissioners on timing and the fact that we have other proposals that are coming up. So, I'll be voting no also.
Call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
As a commissioner, you had your chance at citizen input, I believe, but go ahead.
Oh, citizen input. Yeah, I never thought I would be in a position to not support a request for additional funding for the animal services and adoption center as improving conditions and adoption rates have been a priority of mine since becoming county executive. The incredible staff, generous donors to the shelter and amazing volunteers that Craig leads have all collaborated to help us reach a 97% live release rate and provided excellent care and comfort for our shelter residents. However, as we are all aware, painfully aware, the COVID-19 pandemic has changed the economic and political landscape in Bay County for the foreseeable future. With a 28% unemployment rate, continuing high rate of foreclosures on homes in Bay City and a surge of utility shut offs looming, I sense a high degree of economic anxiety among our residents. Rather than see the shelter millage defeated this year, I would prefer to see it go before the voters in 2022, which would give us ample time to wage a campaign to secure its approval. With a significant increase in millage requests submitted by the Bay County Medical Care Facility, Bay County Library System for additional revenue, along with numerous millage proposals submitted by the townships across the county, I cannot support Commissioner Lutz's proposal at this time and agree with the commissioners who have spoken previously. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Eck?
So, we've said before, leave it to the voters. I guess that's what I'm going to, I'll support it. Leave it to the voters to make that decision and if they feel they can't afford it, they'll, I'll be supporting it.
Everyone has spoken. Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
No.
Harret?
No.
Ryder?
No.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
No.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Three ayes, four nays. Resolution defeated.
Right, thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-120, grant application for juvenile life without parole cases, resentencing, I move that resolution.
For. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Resolution number 2020-121, the CCS plus CMGC contract extension, I move that resolution.
We have. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Harret?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
All right, Ryder?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
And Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, motion, resolution adopted.
Thank you ma'am.
Okay, resolution number 2020-122, the contract service, canteen services contract extension. Is this the one that, the end that I was having trouble hearing you about?
Sorry, say that again.
Is this the one you sent the email about? Did I clear you?
No.
Okay, so I move this resolution.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
And Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Resolution number 2020-123, the Bay County Child and Senior Citizen Center Incorporated, Region 7 Grant Funding, I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Resolution number 2020-124, Legal Services of Eastern Michigan, Region 7 Grant Funding, I move that resolution.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Can we get, who supported that, please?
Commissioner Ryder?
Thank you. Begin the roll call vote with Commissioner Krieger, please.
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
And Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Resolution number 2020-125, Marine Corps League and Auxiliary and Edson Klein Van Slight Bay County Detachment, the 2021 Wind Feeding, I move that resolution.
For. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, motion, resolution adopted.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-126, the Region 7 Annual Plan Fiscal Year 2021, I move that resolution.
For. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Coonan, please?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder? Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
And Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution carried.
Resolution number 2020-127, Senior Citizen Service Employment Program Agreement, I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
And Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-128, Agreements with Salesforce and Carisoft Symptom Tracking and Tracing Efforts COVID-19, I move that resolution.
Support. We have motion and support, discussion, Commissioner Coonan?
Thank you. I know we've got a few of the COVID items on the agenda, but while Joel's here, can you give us a little synopsis of what's going on locally in Bay County, Joel?
Sure. So, for a while in June, we actually had a pretty substantial decrease in the number of cases. That number has substantially picked up in the last week and it's primarily due to the opening of, or I should say this, it's primarily due to gatherings, large gatherings and parties. In two particular cases, there was one party at Torch Lake, which you may have read about in the news or heard about in the news, where it was a pretty substantial boat party. Several of our cases originated from that. And then there was another party that happened in down south in Belleville, where we've got at least three cases that were related to that. But in addition to that, we're starting to see tiny pockets of community spread take place, especially as we begin to open more and more. So, it's very important as we do, as we do begin to open up and as we continue to engage in the community, that we use proper mitigation, which is social distancing and wearing masks, hygiene and so on. A lot of young people, young adults, for one reason or another, just aren't getting this message. And that's primarily now where we're seeing about 70% of the cases are under the age of 30.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Coonan?
Yeah, just a follow-up. Joel, the contact tracing, is there a time gap there? I mean, is it real effective? I mean, by the time somebody gets a test and how long, you know, I know I had to wait about four or five days.
Sure.
Is that an issue? Is it an effective tool or is there still that time gap where you reach out to people that were around somebody and by the time you get them and get them tested and get it back, is that a significant amount of time?
When, from the end of April to pretty much the beginning of July, the average turnaround for a test was about three days. So, it was pretty effective. And the good thing is that by the time that we're notified of a positive case and about 90% or pretty close to 95% of most of the cases that we have, we contact that case and begin to establish contact tracing that same day within a 24-hour period. The troubling thing though is with the outbreaks that are taking place in Florida and Texas, Arizona and California, is that for the bigger laboratories, their volume has grown so substantially that now what we're seeing is that many of the bigger laboratories such as Quest or BioReference, the lag for testing results is actually gone, is actually increasing. So, the good news is when tests are done locally in a lab, there's usually a two or three day turnaround, which is good. Sometimes it's less than a day. But in many cases now, what we're seeing for those physician offices or providers that use Quest Laboratories, we're seeing at least a five-day lag period on that. So, I hope to see that that will shorten up significantly. I know today, the state of Michigan ran 22,000 tests. So, hopefully that will be another good opportunity to, to increase the number of tests here because we're certainly going to need it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Vaughn. I was tested about two weeks ago at Great Lakes Bay Health Center and turnaround was two days. There's no waiting out there. You don't need a doctor's order out there either. So, just heads up information.
No, that is, that's good news, but they also use Quest Laboratories. So, and then we've seen in some cases there that the, the, the wait is about five days now.
Probably. That was a couple of weeks ago when it was slow.
Okay, thank you. Where are we here? Okay, did we vote on that?
No.
No. Do we have a motion and support?
Yes.
We have motion and support. We've had our discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
And Durancheck? Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-129, MDHHS Contact Tracing Funds for COVID-19 Response Efforts, I move that resolution.
This is the one that was revised and you all received it in an email.
Thank you, thank you.
We have motion and support, the revision, the amount should be $182,586.
Cindy, I'll support it.
Thanks, thank you.
We have motion and support. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Yes? Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-130, Sub-Award Agreements with Sagina Valley State University and Bay County, Bay Community Health Clinic, I move that resolution.
For. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, motion approved.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-131, MDHHS Supplemental and Local Stabilization Funds for COVID-19 Response Efforts, I move that resolution.
Support, Big Eck? We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Big Eck, please.
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
And Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution carried.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-132, Master Agreement Funding allocations from MDHHS Fiscal Year 2021, I move that resolution.
Lutz?
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Coonan, please?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
And Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution approved.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-133, Renewal of IT Services to Rescue Public Safety, I move that resolution.
Support, Lutz? We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Harret, please.
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution carried.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-134, Disaster Recovery Co-location Center, dash 123.net, I move that resolution.
For. Motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Ryder, please?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-135, Federal Coronavirus Relief Grants, I move that resolution.
Support, Big Eck? We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Lutz, please?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-136, Payables, General and Center Ridge Arms, I move that resolution.
Support, Lutz? We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution carried.
Resolution number 2020-137, the MDOT Master Agreement with Bay County, I move that resolution.
For. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Big Eck, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, resolution adopted.
Thank you ma'am.
From Finance, the analysis. From Finance, the Analysis of General Fund Equity 2020. I move to receive that.
Support. Lutz?
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Coonan please?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you ma'am.
From Finance, Executive Directive Number 2007 dash 11. I move to receive that.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Motion to receive is carried.
Thank you ma'am.
From Personnel, Tuitionary Amplification for Aleah Foreign Year from District Court, $5,520. I move to receive that.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
The receipt is carried.
Thank you ma'am.
Chairman Durancheck, that is all from the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you Commissioner Herrick. Personnel and Human Services, Tom Ryder.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. We have resolution 2021-38, vacancies in 911 Central Dispatch, Sheriff, PDA personnel, DOA personnel. I would move this resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Lutz please? Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Resolution carried.
Resolution 2021-39, vacancies in the prosecutor office. I would move this resolution.
Support. Big Eck?
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Ryder? Lutz?
Yes.
And Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Resolution carried.
Thank you ma'am.
And from the Office of Assigned Councils, the May 2020, 2020, we move this resolution. Or receive this, move to receive.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Big Eck please?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Motion to receive the report asked by seven yeas, zero nays, carried.
That is all, that is all we have for today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Commissioner Ryder. Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Lutz, Vice Chair.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Today I bring resolution 2020 dash 140, which is the reports of the county executive. I move that to receive those reports. Support. Big Eck?
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Coonan please?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have from the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much Commissioner Lutz. Unfinished business. Unfinished business. New business.
We had the county executive.
Oh, I'm sorry. Report of the, of county officials from the county executive. I'm sorry Jim.
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I have recommended for your approval for outstanding individuals who would like to serve on the Workforce Development Task Force with Michigan Works. And I believe Deanne again included information on their background. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if you would receive them favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your pleasure? That's resolution 2020 dash 141.
Need a move and support please?
I moved it. I'll support it. We have motion and support for resolution 2020 dash 141 from the county executive. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Resolution adopted.
Thank you ma'am. Anything else from the county executive?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I know we could go out of length, but you've conducted a lot of business and we do speak frequently, so I'll pass on giving a full report.
Yes, yes we do. Unfinished business. New business. Miscellaneous. I just want to once again thank Julie and Jody and Nick, the IT people that put this together pretty flawless compared to other municipalities that have all sorts of problems, especially up north. So I really appreciate what you, Els and Nick do. Very, good job. Thank you so much. Joel, are you still out there?
I'm still on.
Okay, very good. I have a question for you. I've been doing a little, I don't know, whatever, research on my own about this COVID. Now there's a mutation out there of COVID-19 that is, from my understanding, it is in some parts of the United States, but it's not quite as severe. Is, is there anything that you can add to that?
I, I've seen small reports of mutations. The last that I heard was that it's a more it's easier to catch, it's a strain that's easier to catch, but not necessarily more virulent. There's still a lot of research that has to be done on that, but we can expect that the virus is going to mutate and hopefully it will mutate to be weaker. But we're still in that first wave of the virus and but what I've heard is that they anticipate that the second wave may be more virulent than the first.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I just, I've just been following, just following along the numbers. I see we have eight on the 10th. That was sort of a jump from what we've had. But the fatalities, I think it was 29 for a while. I see we jumped to 30. So at least the fatalities have not jumped, but sometimes that delays the finding of the new cases, so.
A note about, a note about the fatalities is that from time to time, the, we're finding out that the state is reassigning some of the fatalities, not many. It's just one or two where they'll be reassigned to a case. And so we need to go back and take a look at those cases and make sure with the medical examiner that they were true coronavirus fatalities.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone? No, we'll move to announcements. 2020 Appointments in October, we got a land bank authority. That's a one-three-year term. We also have in October, Department of Health and Human Services Director, one-three-year term.